Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. This is a call to order of the Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councillor Doyle.
Councillor Guth.
Here.
Councillor Howenstein.
Present.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
And I am here as well. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see all these smiling faces in City Hall. And we're going to start off this evening. We have a couple of proclamations. We're going to start with our kids' proclamation. So if we can get all the kids that are here to come on up here. Sit right in front of us, right here, and we're going to face out that way so everybody can see you. Come on up here. Yeah, a little closer. Come on and turn around that way. There you go. We love that. Oh, they're fine. All right. This is a proclamation of the City of Aspen, Colorado, whereas Kids First Early Childhood Resource Center and Picken County Childcare Providers are celebrating the month of the young child in May. And whereas by raising awareness about the value of high-quality early childhood programs available for all children and families in our community, and whereas the City of Aspen thrives when our kids thrive, because they are our future workforce leaders and community members, we all have a role to play in preparing our kids for the future. And whereas building a healthy human brain is a process that begins before birth and continues into adulthood. A strong foundation early on increases the probability that a child will be socially and emotionally healthy as well as physically healthy. Yeah, if we can get the camera on the kids, let's do that. Let's do that. They want to see them. Yep, there you go. Can you see? Whereas given the appropriate learning opportunities that high-quality early childhood programs provide, children acquire language, mathematical, social, emotional, artistic, and physical skill development that strengthens the foundation for success in life embraced by the Aspen idea of mind, body, and spirit. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Aspen City Council and the citizens of Aspen join the National Association for the Education of Young Children in proclaiming May, two thousand and twenty-three as the month of the young child. We extend our heartfelt thanks appreciation to all those who've worked so hard to care for and educate our youngest citizens, and we commend these efforts and encourage community involvement of all citizens to recognize and support the needs of young children. Thank you all. For our kids down here, we heard that some of you like goldfish and some of you like making bubbles. So if any of you would like some goldfish or to make some bubbles, we have some things for you. Come on up. There's some over here, too, guys, right over here.
That one's open for whatever reason.
Thanks for coming to hang out with us, guys.
Goldfish?
You want goldfish?
There you go.
You're so welcome. Only if you have extras. Thanks. Appreciate it.
The month of the young child. I love that. Thank you. Thank you.
Philip Sapino in the house.
We thank so many of our teachers and parents that are in our community. You know, the previous council did have childcare and early childhood education as one of our top three goals. You know, the City of Aspen has been amazing. For years, we've given a lot of attention. Of course, we have funding that's available for childcare and the like. But really, we've stepped it up even more. I mean, it's amazing that it's taken us this long to really try to make steps to valuing our teachers more than we do, but we're on that path. And I really thank the community that supported those efforts that the council has made. I have another proclamation, and this one is regarding Arbor Day. Proclamation of the City of Aspen, Colorado, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious top soils, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. And whereas trees in our city increases property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Aspen has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore let it be resolved that the mayor, city council, and citizens of Aspen hereby proclaim May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three as Arbor Day in the City of Aspen. And we urge all citizens to support effort to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program for this and future generations. Hold your applause. I just wanted to let everybody know that this, let's see, Saturday, the twentieth, on Arbor Day, there is a celebration in Pepke Park, I believe it is, nine to twelve, with the annual tree giveaway. I know this is a highlight for a lot of people. So the tree giveaway will begin at ten thirty a.m. It's nice to have that back. All right, now a round of applause for Arbor Day. With that, that'll bring us to citizens' comments and petitions. Are there members of the public that wish to make comments this evening on items not scheduled for public comment on our agenda? We do ask that you hold these comments to about three minutes so that everybody gets a fair and equal opportunity to speak. Yes, sir. Front row.
For the record, Ed Cross regarding the Centennial issue, a surprise for all of you, I'm sure. I'd like to welcome Bill and Sam. This is the first meeting that I've been at where they're sitting in those chairs. And relative to that, I watched the strategic planning on grassroots yesterday with all the work you guys do, another meeting. And Bill mentioned the aging of our employee housing in particular. And with all these little kids here, I'd like to see some of those kids in Centennial fifty-odd years from now. But the housing's aging. We have a unique situation in Centennial, although housing throughout the community is beginning to age. And the acceleration in the free market is making this even more critical. We are, as you well know, in a lawsuit with you folks. And one of the issues that we are starting to worry about is, I think we'll win the lawsuit, but with a loss, we're in the same situation sometime in the future. And it may look all right to look at Centennial, but it's being eaten away from the inside. We know that. And I'm worried about it eventually having to be demolished. So I would just urge you to take a real hard look. I would, I've offered a solution in the past and continue to say fix Centennial, fund the fix. I noticed that an average house now is twelve point eight million. You can fix our problem for twelve-odd million and have solid units going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Other members of the public in room? I'll look online as well. We are still taking comments online. And last call for public comment? Not seeing any. I'll bring it back to council table. Council members, opportunity for comments. Ward, you're freshly back. How about you start us off?
I don't have a lot to say, but I would say maybe the full spring is over and we really have the real thing here now. But I do remember Arbor Day and the tree giveaway in Pepke Park being snowed out, so it does happen. Remind everybody of the upcoming health fair at the hospital twelfth and fourteenth. I can't remember the dates, but it's a great way to get a blood blood work for just a fraction of the cost. Maybe a tenth of the cost. And for all the guys out there, get your PSA test. Be aware of what's going on.
I think here in Aspen, it's June one and two, and you need to sign up. So it is aspenhospital.org to sign up for the screenings. Thank you, Ward. Bill, comments this evening?
I had something, but it just escaped me. Go ahead, Sam.
Sam?
The only comment I have is we have our council retreat coming up in a week and a half, and I really look forward to that and, you know, consolidating on some issues.
Right on?
I remember, if I may.
Yeah, go right ahead.
We have a bunch of citizen boards in our community that you may be aware of, everything ranging from Historic Preservation Commission to Planning and Zoning, Aspen Animal Shelter, Grants Committee. We're going to do another round of interviews on the fifteenth, but I've just been made aware that in July, many terms of current board members will be expiring. So I encourage the public to please participate in the process, get involved on those boards, simple application on the city's website, find something that suits you, not huge time commitments, and it means a lot. Can't do it without without citizen participation, so.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, from some environmental news, the World Meteorological Organization has says that we have, the world has failed its annual checkup. Droughts, floods, and record-low ice levels all intensified during two thousand and twenty-two. Sea level rise doubled, and greenhouse gases in the atmosphere hit a new record. European glaciers lost a record amount of mass due to below-normal snowfall and record-breaking heat. Closer to home in Canada, fire season is already well underway, with nearly thirty thousand people evacuated in western Alberta and over a million acres already burned due to abnormally hot weather and high winds, and it's only May. Some good progressive news out of New York. Their new law bans gas-powered stoves, furnaces, and propane heating and encourages the use of climate-friendly appliances and heat pumps as well as induction stoves in new residential buildings. And locally, lastly, we have a local company called Airborne Snow Observatories. This story was in today's Colorado Sun, and they measure the snowpack water equivalent by bouncing lasers over the upper drainage, upper headwaters of each drainage every ten feet across all elevations. Obviously, we need these more accurate measurements of our snowpack, because as temperatures rise, we need more information. Sadly, the April third dust layer has affected our snowpack dramatically, as Jeff Deems, the lead scientist, stated. I would imagine, based on our prior research experience into dust on snow, that it will shorten our melt season by a month, Deems said. That's never a great thing. The snowpack is our biggest reservoir. So the longer we can keep it on the mountains, the better off we are in terms of that water being available later in the summer. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, John. My comments this evening start off with welcoming Sarah back. It's good to see you. Welcome back. Along with that, though, I also want to say just some commendation for Diane and your whole team. We're great over the last couple of weeks. We had a lot flying at us, as you know. You know, there was some state legislature stuff, questions coming up on different agenda items for us as well. But your team was absolutely fantastic. So thank you to all those folks that stepped up and got us through the last month. Part of that is I also wanted to say a special thank you to Jen Ooten and Tara Nelson. The help that they gave us over the last couple of weeks, thank you, Jen, really was impactful on a state-level. We were able to, for those of you that don't know, over the last couple of months, there was, the legislative session was in in the state houses, and there was some housing legislature that was coming from the governor's office as well as others. And we rode a long wave with them negotiating for things that were going to protect our community going into the future, that this legislature was seeking to get rid of in, across the state. Anyway, Senate Bill two thirteen was defeated. We did a lot of work on what we'd call a carve-out for a lot of mountain communities. And I think it was because of that work that a lot of other communities recognized that the legislature was, legislation was failing them and looked to us, saying, you know what? They're right. It's not working for them. It really doesn't work for us. So two thirteen was defeated. And then House Bill twelve fifty-five literally had something included in it that I think is being referred to as the Aspen Amendment. Because of some of our growth regulations and growth controls, as well as some of our mitigation efforts, were seeking to be undone by twelve fifty-five. And not because of our position or our using them, just looking at statewide solutions. They didn't take into account communities, not just ours, but others. So anyway, thank you so much for the work that you did, Jen and Tara. I don't know if Tara's in here, but thank you, guys. I wanted to make a quick note. Kelly Murphy from the Aspen Historical Society is interested in getting counsel out to the Holden Marolt for a site visit and stuff. I mentioned to her that it's easier for us to do that in maybe pairs of twos or ones, but it sounded like she was hoping to get us all together. So I just wanted to turn that over to you and say if you want to contact her or find out.
Sure. Do you want me to bring just information back to you to determine if the council wants to use work session time for it?
Yeah, probably. That'd be great. Then I just wanted to praise everybody of two meetings that I attended on behalf of the City of Aspen. The first one was called City Summit of the Americas. This was down in Denver. An amazing Western Hemisphere gathering based on cities and municipal leadership. Very interesting to participate in this, because during the pandemic, one of the things that I kept saying was we all had to keep looking up for direction. So here we are, the municipality at the bottom level. We had to look up to our county for direction from them. Our county had to look up to the state to get direction from them. Our state had to look up to the Fed to get direction from them. It seemed at the time to me that it would have been much more effective to look down. Look at the people on the ground, look at your municipalities and your cities and how the pandemic was affecting people actually living here. And that was kind of the approach of this City Summit of the Americas. There were the mayors from the top of Canada to the bottom of South America. It was an amazing gathering. Interestingly enough, the issues that they are confronting are very similar to the same issues that we have here. No matter the size of your city, city issues are city issues. It was a really great two-day meeting. I got a lot out of it on a lot of different topics. And just wanted to share that I was there with that. Here in our valley, last week, I participated in an arts in our community panel discussion down at Takah. It was actually a full day of discussions. I participated on the government and the arts panel, which was timely considering all the stuff that we've done over the last couple of years to bolster and support the arts in our communities. Which brings me to one item that I wanted to bring up for clarification, and that is the Wheeler Gallery space that we talked about in our work session. I went back and double-checked with Diane to see what they heard as direction for the RFP. And the language that we used that night was that it could be either a gallery or, or in the RFP, it would leave it open for proposals for gallery or food service space, grab-and-go, if you will. I just wanted to clarify, I was not supporting, I'm supporting the RFP. I do not support the "or" in that. I do not think that it's an appropriate space for just a food vendor. I think that it should be gallery-first. If that gallery wanted to do grab-and-go items or a cooler or something like that, that was fine with me, but I had no intention of supporting just a food outlet there. So I don't know if there's opportunity for clarification writing the RFP, if it matters to us, Sarah. If an open RFP to take all comers is what the council wants, but I just wanted to be perfectly clear that I do not have intention of supporting only a food service outlet there. And that's the language that we left Diane with for direction. So, yeah, Ward, you weren't at the table. That's another reason I wanted to bring this back.
Yeah, I was not at the table. I did listen to the three-hour and thirty-six-minute meeting and made notes, three pages of notes. meeting and uh, made notes, three pages of notes on it. Um, I think I made it uh, clear to a number of council members that I supported uh, extending the lease on Valley Fine Art. Um, I am concerned about staff time uh, required to do an RFP, um, and I understand the position that it should be open to all people. It is a city property. Um, I would like to point out, however, that uh, the city has a, a food operation right next door at the pub, and has a food operation uh, at the um, uh, place formerly known as Tasters. Last summer, it had two food trucks down in front of the Rio Grande for affordable um, food and beverage, and perhaps have a discussion coming up for a food kiosk uh, in the Galena Plaza at some point, so. Um, I, I, I was, I'm curious about how long this RFP process would take, how much staff time it would take. I understand I wasn't at the, at the meeting, um, couldn't get it on the airplane from uh, Chicago to Portland, Maine, but uh, uh, tho- those, those are my, were my concerns, and I, I appreciate Tori bringing that to the attention of the public that uh, we did communicate before that and that I had uh, uh, supported the Wheeler Boards, uh, Wheeler Advisory Board's recommendation of extending uh, the lease to Valley Fine Art.
Per- perhaps we do and/or? Could, as we discussed, some combination of the two could be interesting.
Um, I appreciate that. You know, it's, yeah, for me, leaving the option open for a gallery or to, to, to be able to do that is one thing. I, like I said, the or, the or of it, of saying it can be just a food service, I, I, that, I, I just wanted to be clear that that's not something that I support.
I have no problem with that personally.
All right.
But I'm also okay with and/or in the RFP.
All right. I appreciate that. Um, John, do you have any thoughts on the RFP?
Yes. I, I probably wasn't clear enough the other night, but uh, I agreed with the Wheeler Board and wanna support the Wheeler Board in, in advocating for Mia Valley staying in that space, but I also felt that to be fair to everyone, it should be uh, put out to an RFP. Um, but I, especially with listening to Ward's comments, I think it should stay a gallery space. That's my feeling. It, it's a, it's a small space. Uh, there is a restaurant right next door, which is gonna remain a restaurant, and there are other options uh, happening this summer.
Okay. Uh, this is a change from the discussion that we had the other night. So, Sarah, what, how would you like us to handle this to give clear direction about an RFP?
I'd like a motion, please, about what is your first preferred use of the space so we can provide priority to potential respondents about preference of the council for one activity over the other? Would be my preferred approach rather than an either-or, because then uh, it, that is pretty um, ambiguous when you could have a very good restaurant and you could have a very good gallery. Uh, that, that is, I mean, certainly you can put that to staff to make that choice between the two users, and we'll look at things like environmental impact and so on as the other decision-makers or decision criteria that we'd build into the RFP. Um, but I, I would encourage you to see if you can get some clarity of, of, if one is over the other, or the joint concept, you know, many restaurants serve as galleries, too. Um, and that they, they could propose in the community, uh, something of that nature as well.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, Ward, we've heard, you know, there's, there's consideration for wanting to have the opportunity for food service in it. Is, is that okay to move forward with the RFP like that? John, Ward, do you want to put gallery uses first?
Yes.
I'll, I'll put this in the form of a motion. I, I would move that uh, an RFP be issued for the space at the Wheeler Opera House, currently occupied by Valley Fine Arts for the uh, purposes of a gallery.
So, just for some clarity on procedures here, is that, um, that, you know, there will be additional discussion on the motion on the floor and then a call for a vote. Uh, you can propose friendly amendments. Anyone can propose a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor, which is up to the motioner to accept or deny. Um, oh, I'm sorry, we needed the motion second and two. I apologize, forgot that step in there. Uh, before, before a final vote as well. If the motion were to be voted upon and failed, then can, just discussion continues and a new motion is made. Thank you.
Thanks, Lot. Um, uh, we have a motion. Um, did you hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and then, so for discussion, uh, I have, I have clarifying. Ward, the way that you worded that was a gallery, so um, uh, art uses or gallery uses? Can, can you open your language to art, art or gallery uses? Because um, we have, there's an opportunity here for not just a gallery, but art uses. So, I just don't wanna have limiting language, if that's okay with you.
I'll try to figure out how to clarify this. Um, my intent was to have an RFP for the space to be used as an art gallery or galleries.
Thank you. Is the secondary okay with that, John?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I might suggest you wanna include your, you're looking for a retail function, is my understanding is implied here. Um, I just wanna make sure that's correct, too, because there can be galleries that are not meant for sale, that are only meant for viewing, um, like a museum.
I will cl- further clarify.
I mean, I'm open. It, it could be either. I just wanna be clear is the re, typically the leases are based upon a, um, the square footage and some kind of net profit.
Yes.
Sharing.
Yeah, right on.
Yeah, it's four hundred ninety-seven square feet, and uh, I would like to see it uh, focused on uh, local art sales or arts sales.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, further discussion. Do you wanna?
Happy to start, same concern, either way.
Uh, I'll just start by saying, I, I really did like the and/or. The whole idea behind this, to me, was just to see if a food option could work in that space. Like, I didn't feel like it was a final decision. It was an RFP, and for that reason, it didn't feel like as big a deal to just explore that option. And secondly, I know we at least all have gotten an email from one other person that was interested in an art gallery that was also exploring a food option within said art gallery, and I thought that was like a nice road that we were going down as far as exploring the options that we had in front of us. And then maybe going back to Mia if she has the best bid, but we were just doing our due diligence. It wasn't about uh, hurting feelings. It was just about, you know, trying to see what was out there.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Uh, it, the RFP process, though, you know, by the time it came back to you, it would come back to you with a, a recommendation or a selection, so um, it, it's not just fact-finding or to see if opportunities are out there. It, it, you know what I'm saying? It would come back to you in one form or another, but I appreciate what you're saying. Bill, did you have any other comments you wanna make?
Uh, number one, I respect Mia. I respect that she's been a great tenant and uh, has figured out how to make a profitable business there, and I fully understand the potential impact to her and her business on this, and I don't make these comments lightly. Um, firstly, the culinary arts are arts, too, and I think if the purpose of the Wheeler is for arts and culture, then this could be an appropriate use and fit in that building. Doesn't just need to be paintings and sculpture. Culinary arts are a real form of the arts and one that I respect tremendously. And I ask you to, you to think about the community utility of a retail art gallery or uh, art shop, if you will. I've never been inside of Valley Fine Arts in my thirteen years here. Uh, I don't know if any of the others sitting at this table have. I've certainly never purchased anything from there. I think it provides very low community utility, and I think that that is really our uh, responsibility for a space like this, is how do we provide utility to the community? Um, I think we have plenty of art galleries serving that niche for our locals, our tourists. Um, I don't think we're, we'd be filling an unmet need by any stretch of the imagination by, by renewing her lease, and I think that there are other uses, and I'm open to other ideas, by the way, that would provide much greater community utility than a retail art shop. Um, so I, 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 I really um, ask that you all consider what kind of benefit we could provide to our community in considering this. I don't think that a retail art gallery provides much of one that we don't have already.
Thanks for that.
May I respond? Bill, you, you really should go in there. There's some awesome artwork in there. The um, Curtis photos of uh, native Ute Indians is, uh, there's some stuff in there that is uh, archival, made on silver prints. It's just some awesome artwork in there. And um, I did, before I left for Maine, I stopped over to take a look and talk to Mia. She, it was closed. There was a sign on the door saying that she was five minutes away. Give her a call. Um, but it's um, you owe it to yourself to stop in there.
I appreciate that, but I, I think one, one other thing I'd add is there's a lot of art galleries that can make it in non-city-owned space in this town. So, it doesn't mean that Valley Fine Arts is gone forever if, if we don't renew her lease there. Perhaps there's another location that she could move to. I would hope that she would be able to do so, I should say.
Thanks, Bill. Um, okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, could we have a roll call vote for the motion for the RFP and clarifying language?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
No.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you for engaging that, Sarah. Appreciate you. Um, all right, uh, my last comment is, uh, I needed to bring this up because summer is right around the corner. I need to talk about the corner of Hyman and Galena. Um, I, I still think that it improves our downtown pedestrian corridors to make Hyman Avenue between Galena and... Thank you. Hunter. Yes, that's correct. Yep. Um, uh, two-way. Uh, we switched it to one-way during the Living Lab. Um, this is the, this is the, out in front of the Elks Building where the Ute Mountaineer is. Um, so Ward and John have been through this conversation with me before. I continue to think that it's, it's probably a better traffic flow to allow cars to get off of Galena and not go around the Paradise Bakery Corner. But beyond that, we also have a loading zone that is on the Hyman Avenue's side, uh, or I'm sorry, on the Galena side of the Elks Building. Um, again, we have a loading zone smack dab in the middle of our pedestrian corridor. Um, I think that there could be a better configuration in this area. I just need to know if there's other council members that wish to look at this at all.
I'd be happy to. I, I, I think you're correct about, it would be nice for people to be able to exit out on the Hyman and not have to go around Paradise Corner.
I think it's safer, and I'm so haunted by what happened at that corner that I tend to prefer the one-way.
Right.
Orientation. Um, the thing that also nearby happens more often than you believe, my office is on Cooper, and I look down on this frequently, is people driving the wrong way on Cooper. I don't know if this happens also on um, Hyman in that one block, but...
Still happens on Galena.
Pe- people are driving the wrong way on Cooper towards Paradise every single day, and I think that's probably a, a bigger, another safety concern to address, but that wasn't your point, so.
Uh, I appreciate it.
I'm happy to look here. I don't know how that we come to a definitive conclusion, but I am haunted by what happened.
Yeah.
And I do think it's safer ultimately, so.
I appreciate that. Um, does anybody wanna look at this?
I, I, I feel comfortable with the stop sign and, and the one-way on Hyman coming in, and I understand it does, does create some captive uh, traffic going up past the, where the Accra uh, kiosk is and where Paradise Bakery is, but I, too, am haunted by the uh, accident a couple of years ago.
Appreciate that.
Um, I feel the same way. My daughter actually witnessed the aftermath of that accident, and um, I think safety is a huge concern at that intersection for me.
Okay.
I, I, I would be interested in looking at changing the loading zone, but I, I don't see where it would go. I know in Telluride, they, they park them right in the middle of the street, and traffic goes around them, but...
It's awful, too.
We don't, yeah, we don't want that here.
We used to. We used to. Okay, I appreciate that. I just need to make sure that where, where we're at, I don't hear support for looking at the one-way over there. A little bit of support for just investigating the rest of it. I think Scott's, uh, th- they're looking at it in, in their, in their everyday work. They're looking at it, so I think we're comfortable with that.
Yeah, the, the direction you gave engineering on November first was to study that whole area.
Great.
Do a comprehensive study and come back to you. And that's planned for later this summer.
The, the, the one thing I'd re, I'd request you add to the study is how do we prevent people from, or how do we discourage people from driving the wrong way on these one-ways? I, I think it's so dangerous.
Duly noted.
Thank you. All right. That is my comments. Thanks for indulging me. Uh, that'll bring us to agenda amendments. I didn't see any uh, city manager's comments this evening.
Good evening. Just a few quick things. Uh, thank you. Welcome. Thank you for your, your comments uh, earlier, Mr. Mayor. I am so proud of the team uh, giving me a chance to step away uh, and uh, attend some family, family uh, time together uh, over the last few weeks. The uh, only item I wanted to share with you tonight is that um, there will be open house and airport tours that might be of interest to council members on May twenty-second. Uh, and the um, there's, there's two sessions. There's a twelve to two P M. session. It is, uh, you're right, but let me finish. Uh, the tours are from two-thirty to four, and then there's an evening session from four-thirty to six-thirty, so we will be done with retreat in time. If you wanted to go to that four-thirty to six-thirty timeframe at the airport, um, and if uh, if many of you want to, to tour the airport, I could make a request for um, some, perhaps some type of accommodation of a, a special work session, uh, if there's a majority of you that would like to go out and see it. Uh, just as a, a friendly reminder, the airport is closed effective tomorrow uh, for fourteen days for runway maintenance. Um, and that's pretty necessary out there if you're not familiar with um, the issues with the runway. Um, they definitely need to get, get addressed. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
I, I, I encourage everybody to take a tour of the airport. It's pretty, pretty eye-opening. Um, the constrained uh, um, conditions that they're working under, I think uh, it'd be some good background.
Thank you. Uh, that'll bring us to board reports. Any board reports this evening?
Sam, do you wanna do core, or should I?
You can do core.
Okay. Uh, so, the most recent core meeting, um, the strategic plan has been adopted. Uh, forty percent of core initiatives are gonna be directed towards the underserved and the goal of reduction of sixty-nine thousand two hundred metric tons of C O two by twenty-thirty. Impact statement: A region where individuals, businesses, and governments connect ideas, people, and resources to take collective action to slow the pace of climate change. Um, we are going to be talking to the county about alignment in uh, our, our environmental goals and the stru- yeah. And then the other, APCHA board, did you wanna do that one?
Did we not report on the APCHA?
Oh, that was May th-
I thought we did that one.
May third, I suppose.
I thought we talked about-
I think we did. We covered that one. Okay.
I thought we did. We talked about some of the rightsizing and some of the uh, repair work and...
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, my only board reports this evening are that this Thursday I have a triple header. Rafta in the morning, Board of Health uh, Retreat all day, and then uh, Sister Cities uh, in the evening. That'll bring us to our consent calendar this evening. The consent calendar this evening is Resolution Number forty-nine, which is a spring supplemental. Adjustments: Resolution Number sixty-five, mondo flooring replacement at the Aspen Ice Garden. Resolution sixty-six, water place roof replacements. Uh, Resolution Number seventy, Flux Services Change Order. Resolution Number seventy-one, Truscott Stair Replacement. Resolution Number seventy-two, Hallam and Garmisch Storm Pipe and Water Main Replacement Project Construction Inspections. Resolution seventy-four, Lewis Ice Arena Roof Repair, and the draft minutes of the twentieth and the twenty-eighth of March. Are there any items that members wish to pull for further discussion?
Forty-nine, please.
We will be pulling forty-nine. Any others?
No.
All right. All right. Spring supplemental adjustments.
This is just the APSHA.
Oh, yes, this is APSHA spring supplementals.
Yeah.
Yes.
So my questions pertain to the Woody Creek Affordable Housing Unit purchases. I, I'd like to understand the full picture of the economics here. So I see what you're asking for in funding. How much will be recaptured on the sale of these units, or how much is anticipated to be recaptured?
My question's exactly.
Excuse me. We anticipate recovering all the funds you allocate through resale.
Both acquiring the unit and the upgrades from Clayton Homes?
Yes.
Oh, great. That's my only question. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I want just, Matthew, if you could just clarify this. I, I thought the, the county was contributing a lot of money, and we're contributing money. We're purchasing a unit or land.
It's two units in Woody Creek, which we're acquiring. We will sell them to Clayton Homes, and then when Clayton Homes sells it back, we'll sell it, covering any costs through the process. So it'll, it'll be a brand-new unit on both these Woody Creek units.
And Clayton Homes is, they're, they're just the people that are contracting the repairs?
Exactly. It's a full scrape and replace, we're anticipating.
Okay. And then when they get sold, APSHA, do those $300,000 that we're contributing come back to our fund?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my questions. And Bill, you, you had, I was going to pull forty-nine as well and ask the same questions. Thank you.
Any further questions? Anything else? Thank you, guys. If there's a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. That'll bring us down to public hearings this evening. The first one is ordinance number nine. This is adding short-term rental tax to the municipal code.
Anybody presenting, or?
I can cover this, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm not sure Pete went to, but this is, there he is. This is a technical adjustment to the municipal code to codify the voter direction for implementing the short-term rental tax that was approved this previous election cycle.
Thank you.
Sorry, I guess it's two election cycles ago now. But that, that is, in our eyes, this is a requirement to meet the State Department of Revenue expectations and our accounting principles and regulations. We need to codify this in the municipal code. Did I miss anything, Pete?
No, you did great. Sorry I missed the cue.
All right. Are there any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion of ordinance number nine. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak today on ordinance number nine? Seeing none, bring it back to council table.
I, I will vote that we adopt ordinance number nine, series of 2023.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
I do, I think voter mandate is for, and the decision and direction from our community was to enact this tax, and this is a housekeeping. And I think this is, it's our responsibility to, and I think our duty to adopt this ordinance to fulfill the voter, the election.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please, for ordinance number nine?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Uh, yes. Our next public hearing is for ordinance number seven. This is a spring supplemental budget request.
Thank you, council. Second reading of spring supplemental ordinance seven. The supplemental request, total expenditure authorization of $65.8 million. Reminder of that, $54.5 million is requested capital and operating carryforward from prior fiscal year. In addition, there are $4.2 million, excuse me, in revenue adjustments and transfers. There are three new items that were not included in first reading. A technical adjustment for use of recreation departmental savings of $28,780 to purchase a new electronic indoor climbing board. Replacement of a damaged water utility vehicle. They are replacing it with a more efficient hybrid option. And that $50,000 expense will be partially offset by the insurance payment. And finally, the technical adjustments for the capital project at Hallam and Garmish for the water mains and stormwater line replacements. All other spring supplemental requests were included in first reading.
Thank you. Let's start with questions. This is a public hearing, so I will open it to the public. But if you have any questions at this time, we do need to talk about the armory allocation. So we'll do that. But are there any other type of questions?
I had all my questions addressed. I still have comments, but no questions at the moment.
Okay.
I'm just curious how the vehicle was totaled and how old was it and what was it replaced with?
That was my question.
Sorry, gentlemen. Were you driving?
I was not driving.
So, Ward, this is, this was not our fault. It was a...
I have two daughters that kept saying that.
Yeah, yeah. So it was the, actually, the trash company's fault slid into us during some, you know, snowy weather in the last couple of months. This vehicle was actually reaching the end of its useful life. My guess is it was around 2014 or 15. And it's a distribution vehicle. So the folks out there turning valves and, you know, fire hydrants, things like that. So equipment-style truck.
What was it replac, whoops, wait?
What was it replaced with?
Yeah, so we're, we're doing a, a hybrid vehicle. I believe it's a Ford truck. We actually worked with Streets Department and looked at the new all-electric Ford Lightning, but they just didn't have bed lengths and, and sizes that fit the need for that particular position. But excited that we are going to hybrid and doing better on our footprint.
Well, that was my inquiry in mind. It just popped out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, we're, we're happy no one got hurt, most importantly.
This is a public hearing for ordinance number seven. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on the spring supplemental budget request this evening? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. All right. Bill, you have some comments or some ideas, or do you want to?
Sure. Thank you. So I think my biggest outstanding concern with the spring supplemental budget is a $200,000 capital request for upgrades to the armory for the purpose of Accra's office use in the interim five-year period. I struggle with this for a number of reasons. One is, I, I just think that five years is far too long for an interim use. I think that I am, this is something that I'm super passionate about, is converting and restoring the armory to a community use, and Accra's offices do not fit the definition of a community use to me. I, I understand that there's some master agreement that has been signed with Accra. I, I could be wrong here. I don't believe that there's been a lease specifically for the armory executed for the interim five years. One idea that I just thought about this afternoon was per, perhaps if we did not start the work on the powerhouse, is that the right term? The powerhouse, for another couple of years until we had things figured out for the armory, then this problem goes away and these dollars go away. You know, there's no need to fund interim office improvements if we're not relocating them there yet. So I'd ask everyone to really consider this carefully. I, I think Accra has a wonderful footprint in, in the city of Aspen already. We have a visitor center at the Wheeler. We have a visitor center at the corner of Cooper and Galena, is it? I, I think, I think our, our visitors are served well by their visitor centers, and they do a wonderful job. But having them take over in a non-community useful way at the armory for the next five years would be a tragedy to me.
It's not, it's not just offices. It would be a visitor center. It would be, it would be serving visitors and, and residents.
Yeah, I understand that. Again, I think we have two of those already, so I don't really see the need for a third.
If I could just clarify, there's currently the primary visitor center at the powerhouse. The primary visitor center would be relocated into the armory underneath our current agreement. That would also include the opening of a U.S. Forest Service Visitor Center in conjunction with that, because there's a very high demand for visitor adequate etiquette training that the Forest Service is willing to provide, and that we're in negotiations, I shouldn't say we. Accra is in negotiations on the city's support to employ a full-time Forest Service employee in wherever the ma, the main visitor center is, regardless of the location.
That could occur at the powerhouse also?
Yes. The, the timing that we are under right now is a direction by resolution by the council that the old powerhouse should be renovated first. And that direction was set to help us manage budgeting priorities, and that was done approximately 18 months ago. Regarding the other visitor center is the kiosk on the, on the pedestrian mall is nearing the end of its life, and we anticipate that Accra will be choosing to have that replaced in some form. They need a few years to figure out exactly what that looks like, but it is unlikely to be the same format that it is today. And then once the, with the, the location of the, the armory, I should say, they, they view it as something that has a little more transitory nature to it. So if they, we have festivals going on in locations in town that have the ability to move that asset to that location to be more entwined with the people visiting our community. And then regarding the location in the Wheeler, the Wheeler location may close actually under the agreement as we're consolidating these services. There are some significant changes in the Wheeler, significant challenges in the Wheeler lobby with the visitor services presence there right now. And it's, when we look at the data about who's visiting which location, the Wheeler is the least visited of the, of the, of the three visitor centers associated with the city of Aspen. There is a fourth visitor center, just so everyone's aware, out at the airport, that is managed independently of the city's agreement with Accra. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, so Bill's primary objective here is to get the armory project going and done.
That's correct. And then secondarily, concerned about spending $200,000 on upgrades that don't seem that necessary to me. But that's definitely a secondary concern.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So we, I think we all share the same priority of getting the armory done. We recognize that there's years of planning that need to happen before physical work would be happening over there. So the, the current, the current timeline was to move everything out of the armory, work on it, to get it to a place to be usable, so that Accra could move out of the powerhouse, so the work could happen over there, to put everything over there so that the long-term work can happen at the armory. And what we're talking about is if that, let's see, what would be our options here is?
Can I suggest that, you know, the reason you're starting the work on the powerhouse first is because it's ready to go, and the plans for the armory are not ready to go.
Right.
And so that was a natural ordering of sequence based upon the, the scheduling of our project managers and of the level of planning that we are at. We have some work still to do on the planning site at the, the old powerhouse, but not nearly as significant as what's required for the armory. And we're coming back to you, I think, in two weeks for a conversation around the short-term rental sales tax, because we need some direction on how you would like to utilize those funds, because a portion of it is for infrastructure, such as the armory. Pete and I have identified roughly $12 million to go towards the armory so far as cash on hand. But you have a project estimate of today's dollars, it might have been last year's dollars, actually, of 28 to 30 million to do it. And so if you add an eight to 10% construction inflation on that for three years to get through design and permitting, you know, you're up to a 35 million-plus project to, to deliver what we've heard. And so there's some priority setting the council will need to do in the 2024 budgeting process about where that fits in to, to your priorities in order to, to fund it happening more quickly, or whether we continue to save cash up. It's kind of, it's kind of tough right now. The dollar today is worth more than the dollar in three years with what's happening right now. We watch the Treasury notes. So we, we will certainly take your, your direction on this. And, and I certainly understand that, I mean, I think we're all frustrated about sinking 200 grand into a building that we're never going to see that money back on. I think there is some basic things that the Accra has requested. We can reduce that number further, but I would suggest, there is a reason we left that facility, because it was not even Class C office space by the time we left. And so it needs, at least it needs some paint and some lighting and some basic carpet, things like that, to make it function for the public to be able to be in and out of it. Thank you.
I guess I also fundamentally struggle with why it's the city of Aspen's responsibility to improve office space for Accra. With all due respect to what Accra does for our community and beyond, I, I, I struggle with how that's our responsibility and how that's wise use of our community's dollars.
Do we know what, what part of $200,000 goes towards office space versus the visitor space? Like?
The majority of that's going to be spent on the visitor space, the visitor center and the, the user experience of the people coming to visit Accra. Just a minor.
And redoing the bathrooms.
And the bathrooms, correct.
So, so it's really about the usability of that first floor as, as for residents and visitors? You know, it's partly about office, but it's not really about the office. It's about, it's about the visitor center.
I, I've just, I struggle with it. I don't know why Accra's not independent from the city in this regard. I, I, I feel they're overly dependent on the city, and that's not a good thing for any of us. But things like this are sticky. I think if we put, if we put Accra into there, it's going to be hard to get them out even in five years. There's going to be sentiment about, it's working well, it's the right location, you want to put us in an inferior location, a whole host of reasons that I can anticipate and not anticipate right now. I think if you value the future of the armory, this is a real mistake to put them in there for the next five years.
I, I had a conversation today with Debbie, and that's not their sentiment or their feeling. They're not looking at, they most definitely are not going to want to stay there after five years, because we're giving them a facility that will do, but is not what they want. That's not going to be an issue. Beyond that, Debbie did share with me that, you know, their, their intention is to work with the city for whatever is best for our community. So whether that is five years from now or three years from now that we would be wanting to move forward with the armory, they don't have issue with that. They don't have a, a, a problem with, with that. So, and I just say that just to lay some of... So, and I just say that just to allay some of those fears for you.
I, I don't know if we'll be here, I don't know if you'll be here in three years, hopefully I'll make it alive the next three years, let's see. Yeah, I don't know if Debbie will be there in three years, a lot can change. So it, it, for me, it's less about the money, although I am hesitant about the money than it is about the future of the Armory. And if there's, if there's some way to say definitively after three years, there's a lease term that ends and there's an opportunity for renewal if we're not ready yet, that's something I could get on board with. But to have this open-ended five-year with maybe there's an out clause, but then there's 180-day automatic renewal, to me, it's a bad lease for, for the community.
And that, those are all possibilities, I just need direction and, and we would not take that direction from you in a public setting, we'd prefer that in executive session as part of a negotiation.
All right.
I just want to say, I, I share the same thoughts, it's, it's not even so much about the money for me, but it is so much more about the timeline. I, I wish it was closer to three years or, uh, as short as possible till we can, you know, get the funding and get the plans and get moving on turning the Armory into more of a community space. That definitely is what it's about for me. And not to invoke someone's name that I don't know how they feel about, but I remember reading about Bill Sterling back when he ran for mayor back in 1983. And one of the first things written about him was how he was against a mandatory tax that would have funded the Chamber of Commerce because the Chamber should rely on businesses. So it is kind of like a funny thing 40 years later that we're funding the Chamber to move into our old City Hall in some ways.
What? This has a long history. It, it at least goes back to 2015 with an advisory vote for what the, uh, Armory was to be used for, which passed narrowly as community use. If you'll indulge me just for a couple of minutes to put a, a timeline on this. After that election, uh, the city council at that time chose to not listen to the advisory vote and put city offices in the Armory. All in this timeline is when this City Hall was being designed, there was an election confirming that the city wanted, uh, uh, this location for housing, there was a lawsuit that held things up for a year or more. We had an option to put it at the old Daily News Building, uh, the electorate chose to have the city offices here, City Hall here, but it wasn't decided at that time, uh, if City Hall, if the city council chambers were going to be at the Army. At that time, there was a sentiment that it should remain at the Army. The, the powerhouse, it, this goes back to 1617, a whole RFP in process for put, uh, the old power plant to, um, or whole, old Holy Cross building to put to community use. Seven months later, it was revoked. Now, uh, we start talking about, uh, moving along in 18, 17, 18, 19 about, uh, what, how this building was going to be programmed, um, also how the, the Galena Plaza was going to be used. It, along the way, it was decided, uh, uh, that the city council chambers would be here instead of at the Armory that we wanted, there was a consensus, I think, throughout the, the council, um, probably two councils at that time, uh, through that timeframe that we all wanted the Armory to be used for community use. It had been promised by previous council that the, the powerhouse, the old Holy Cross building was going to be community use. And then, uh, as time evolved, we decided to put as many of the office, city offices into that building, uh, as possible to program it so that we could put, um, offices there for foreseeable future. And to, to free up the Army, we've had two or three work sessions on what we want, what kind of, uh, um, configuration, how much money we wanted to spend, if we want to put a full basement. Putting lipstick on a pig or just, uh, going full bore on it. So there was, there was a history about how the, um, Armory was to be used. And I, I think, and I think would really be helpful for, for all of us to have clarification on the, the timing and the phasing for getting, and we had decided, we being the, um, a council, previous council had decided that we wanted the, um, Rio Grant or the, um, old powerhouse, Holy Cross to be completed first so offices could move in there so we could, uh, do the Army as soon as possible. There was COVID-19 came along and there are all kinds of reasons it's been delayed, prices have escalated, but, um, and, and since then, we've had a new master agreement with Accra. And, um, you know, they, city doesn't, um, fund Accra, there's a sales tax that, um, funds Accra that was voted by the, the people and that money pretty much just passes through the city to Accra. So the, I think it would be really useful to have, um, some kind of discussion about the timing and phasing. And also Jim, I think, um, uh, there, we've talked about this a couple of times about the, what the ma- the master lease does, what it, uh, it gives to, um, Accra, what they want, and I think they would be happy to stay at, at, um, old powerhouse, but.
I, I share some of the concerns here that it, they get taxpayer money for funding and, um, I, I think that some of the, uh, the visitor kiosk and Ford, Forest Service should be at the Armory, but I think the vast majority of that space should be programmed for community use. Not that, um, visitor center and the Forest Service are, that's community use as well. But, uh, as far as administrative offices, uh, in the long, long run, um, you know, they could have their offices somewhere else. I certainly don't think that they should be taking up space on the first floor. There is a basement, maybe they could sort of have some offices there, but, um, I think the 200K is needed to, to refit it and, um, I, I would like a, a further discussion, maybe Jim could bring us up to date on what the, what the, uh, agreement with Accra was, how we can change that Armory lease. And I don't know if now's the time to do it or if we, um, we revisit this.
We'd recommend coming back to you, um, probably later this month or early June, we can give you, um, a historical update too about, um, some discussions that are now 10-plus years old with previous councils that are required in our public facilities master planning to provide office space for Accra. So that direction has been given to staff for a decade now. And so it's a pretty big shift if the council would like to go from that, which is something we just need to work through, make sure we understand for our conversations with Accra about that, um, where that would go and how we would, um, facilitate the transition period for them. But we can come back to you in June, I think it would be helpful, we can give you an update on the timing and the contracting of the old powerhouse. My recollection is right before you left, I left town, you passed a, um, a contract on the powerhouse, right? I'm, I'm looking at, it's a little foggy.
So we have a contract through schematic design for the powerhouse.
Yeah. So we're, why don't we, um, come back to you if that's okay? If you are, um, you know, it is certainly the council's, you know, direction about what to do about the 200,000 that we've, um, set in the supplemental budget. Just procedurally, some options for you would be you can approve it as, um, presented and give me independent direction that I should come back and check in with you before those dollars are spent, um, for a secondary approval. The other option would be is to make a motion to do, uh, the removal of that item from the budget, from the budget supplemental package. You'd pass that, you'd have to do that as an amendment process, um, to the resolution, sorry, to the ordinance before you. But I would encourage us not to get into the details of the Accra piece tonight. Let's give you a full presentation with the whole background so that you're fully informed for your decision-making and tonight focus on whether, how you want to handle the funding request that staff has put forward. I, I want to be clear with you too, is we've, we've talked Accra down, right? This is not a pie in the sky number, this has been a talking down of, of some other aspirations of that space that we've said no to at the staff level that we didn't feel comfortable with. But if you want to hear what those are, we can go into that as well. Thank you.
I did want to, um, add that, um, part of the agreement that we had with Accra that was adopted, um, by the prior council did suggest that we, um, act and work in good faith with Accra to come up with a final lease for Galena by May 31st. I've talked to the attorney for Accra and we will, will probably propose to come back with a, an extension of that time. And, and Accra, I believe, supports it in that, according to their attorney.
Could, could I request to see if there's council appetite for a work session dedicated to discussing Accra and the city relationship with Accra?
I thought that's what Sarah was.
Yeah, but I think we have to.
Mine was focused on the off, was on the physical buildings, not on the business relationship with Accra. So just to clarify, I was talking about the city assets, I think, I think Councilmember Goose's request is different.
Could you?
I, I think it would be inclusive of the physical assets, but, but, and then some.
I'm sorry, Bill, could you repeat that so it's clear in my mind?
Sure. I do, I think we should actually, on further thought, I think we should start on a conversation regarding physical spaces and the city's physical spaces and the relationship with Accra. So I would request to see, well, I'd, I'd ask my fellow council members if there's an appetite to have a work session specifically focused on that. Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
That's what Sarah just suggested, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, definitely on that. I think that would be a huge help.
That's, that's what's on the table is for a meeting in June.
That, I, I would suggest that it's currently not scheduled, but we can, we can make that happen for you in early June, we think. I'm just looking to see if there's a majority council support for that.
And the scope for the June meeting would be specifically what? I, I heard Bill say something about all of the, uh, um, offices in Accra's, uh, usage and city usage, um, um, that, I need clar- I need clarity in my mind.
Accra usage of city buildings and spaces.
Sure, and, and there's three tied pieces together. The, uh, the old mountain rescue building on Main Street that you directed us to, uh, convert into, uh, employee housing units and to maintain the historical integrity of the, of the resource there. Uh, I think we should give you an update on the powerhouse, honestly, I think that would be valuable because it's been, I think it was February when we last talked about it. Uh, and then we can give you an update on the Armory and by then you would have had a, um, initial funding conversation that would give us a little bit of time to think through timeline, uh, on is it possible to shave a year or something off of that five years? Thank you.
Bill, would it be acceptable, acceptable to you to have an inform- information-only memo with all, with the, um, uh, information about where the, what all those moving pieces are?
Thanks for asking. No, I think, I think we should have a discussion about it. I think it's important, I think you have concerns about housing the administrative offices of Accra in, in some of the most valuable prime city spaces and buildings and I share some of those concerns. Yeah, I think we should examine that relationship and how it pertains to, to physical spaces.
John?
Yeah, I, I think the information memo would be most helpful because it seems like, again, the three of us who have been here know most of this information already and how the different pieces fit together, the mountain rescue building being converted into employee housing, because the, the idea is to get all our departments in city-owned buildings. And, and Accra, because we have an agreement with them. So in my mind, most of this is pretty clear, so I, I would be happy with just an information memo.
You know, our priority here sounds like we'd like to get the Armory going. Then, second to this is, uh, there's a desire by some council members for a longer discussion about the relationship between the city and Accra.
As it pertains to physical spaces, city-owned physical spaces.
Do those work together in, in a conversation in June?
We can schedule them both the same night. Uh, I think that, I want to just check in with Debbie and, um, the, the chairperson of Accra to make sure that they're available to attend for that conversation. I think it'd be important that they be represented in the room.
Okay. All right. I, I'm supportive of it, it sounds like we need to get these things ironed out, we need to do it at a work session, so I, I support it.
If we could have that info memo ahead of time so we could study it thoroughly before the work session?
We'll do our best, but we're talking about four weeks from now, so it might all come out together.
Yeah, thank you for that, Sarah. Um, okay, uh, we'll schedule that for discussion, we need to make, uh, some decisions on the supplemental request, the 200,000. You know, I'll just sh- share my view of it is, uh, un- under our current program, right? Under our current program, I'm fine with $200,000 because I, I want it to be usable for the next three years, you know, even if it is only three years. I, I, so for me, I don't have an issue with the $200,000. If, if we stayed on the program that we're on, it's going to be utilized as a visitor center, welcome center, uh, Forest Service information stuff. So for me, the 200,000 is not an, I'm, I'm not hung up on that in our current program. If our program changes, then obviously that would, that would be different. But for me, uh, we need a motion here soon and. I would, I would leave it in, as Sarah suggested, uh, we could leave it in with a check back so that we know that it's not going ahead of our schedule or other conversations. That would be the motion that I would report.
Sarah, when you said the, um, powerhouse is ready to go, does that mean there's a building permit in hand, ready to go?
No, because we're at schematic, because there is, uh, one component of the building that we may need to take to the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission.
Okay, so realistically, how long before the work could start in there and Accra would have to vacate?
Are you starting the exterior, Rob, before the other, go ahead?
Yeah, we, we could speed up certain portions of that. I would say, you know, based on our current progress, we're still waiting HPC hearing, maybe fourth quarter of this year would be when we could start. You know, pending building permit approval and whatnot, so.
Okay, so if we did not approve, if we pulled the 200,000 out of the spring supplemental, when would be the next opportunity to revisit that expenditure?
It would be in November. Right now, our hope was to have Accra relocated out of the old powerhouse before major construction occurred because of the noise associated with it, because there's a lot of, um, uh, exterior masonry work that will be saws and annoying things for, for an office environment. Our current agreement, um, was to attempt to deliver Accra's new visitor center in the new space around October 1st because they do not want to move in the middle of a high tourism season so that that way there's enough time to update all of the websites, promotional materials, et cetera, to the new location. So they need, they need some lead time, excuse me, uh, if, uh, that timeline is changing because they're making plans now, uh, for that launch of, of the changed location.
Yeah, understood. So if we pulled this, correct me if I'm wrong here on this theoretical timeline, i- if we pulled this tonight. We could revisit it in November and relocate them in the spring, so they would lose the winter season, kind of worst-case scenario, assuming it got approved in, in November.
Yes, and you would lose the additional six months of work on the powerhouse, which would then delay the Armory work longer.
Ask a clarifying question, uh, we talked about this earlier, but the lease terms for Accra in the Armory are still up for negotiation, technically speaking, we can still discuss them. Because for me, once again, it's not so much about the money, it's more about the lease terms, honestly, I guess.
We, we have to finalize the lease.
Yeah.
There are significant terms that were part of the agreement that was adopted pursuant to resolution, I don't have the resolution number, but, but was part of the, um, tourist promotion fund agreement that was adopted whenever that date was.
In March of this year.
Yeah, I saw it, March 28th, but.
It outlined terms for the lease. It had some, the, the final lease will have some points that are negotiable, negotiable, but there are specific terms that have been.
So as an example, the, right, the things we did not get into is the final value of, um, landlord improvements because we needed your budget authorization to, to negotiate those with. And then we did not negotiate parking yet, which is another piece of it, and we did not negotiate the use of Connor Park in any capacity. I would say those are probably the three major areas left, are there any other major areas?
There's a major area of the specific rent that will be charged.
The rent is specified in there.
It's, it's specified.
Twenty-three, 2337 for the unimproved space.
But is the length of the lease negotiable at this point, or is it five years?
It's five.
It's up to five.
It's up to five.
Up to five, but.
But there's a provision to provide six months notice to end. But there's a provision to provide six months notice to end it sooner.
So we could end it sooner, technically. And we, without penalty on our end, or?
Well, i- it gets complicated, and we probably should talk about this at a later, later time. But, um, and I can explain this to you offline, too, but it does get, um, get complicated because if we, if we do win the agreement or the lease, then we have committed to five years, I believe, for at least a portion of the, um, of the property. Fifty percent, I believe, is the term, um, for some of the space through the, the term of the agreement.
Of?
The, the lease, the five years.
You mean of square feet in general, or square feet in the armory building?
In the armory building.
Yeah, therein lies my point. We're not gonna be able to get.
Right, and that's why I'm suggesting a work session so that we take you back to two thousand ten and twelve when this conversation happened at the council table, and direction was to provide them office space and visitor center space and how that has evolved into what we're into today.
And if we, we can terminate aspects of this, but we would, we were committed to providing them, um, certain administrative office space through the term of the lease.
Right, in good faith, though, we, we do have, if we don't have another place to put them, they're on their own. And I've been very clear with, um, well, actually, I, I should, um, refrain saying that on record.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what you were gonna say, but, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, look, we're, we're all having the same conversation. We want the armory to move forward as, as best it can, as soon as it can. Uh, we think that we've got that, you know, to move forward as quickly as possible. We, we have outs on our lease terms, we have the ability to get it going. Again, I suggest we take a motion with the language that Sarah suggested about checking in on the two hundred thousand so it's not spent without a, an additional check-in. And look forward to our work session in June where we can talk on these items further with more detail.
Are there any other spring supplemental? I guess the motion would wanna encapsulate all spring supplemental stuff, right?
Yes, yeah, yes. Yeah, we wanna go through everything first, but, yeah.
I, I have a question, is, Mike? The finalization of the lease, is that subject to, uh, city council approval?
Okay.
Yes, it's more than twelve months, so I do not have authority.
Okay. It would, as I mentioned earlier, it has to come to you, and the agreement was to bring it back by May thirty-first. But we have talked about extending that already, and we'll probably come with a resolution extending that negotiation.
All right, uh, let's move on. We can always come back to this. Let's move on to other questions in the supplemental. Ward?
Page one eighty-nine, um, e-bikes for the police department. Sixty-two hundred and forty-nine dollars each for two e-bikes has, um, raised my ears. Seems like a lot of money for an e-bike.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Scott.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Linda. You knew this was coming.
So I can go over, um, just in choosing, oh, sorry. Yeah, so we are purchasing three e-bikes. How we chose these e-bikes is really to, um, focus on the reliability of them. The battery provides us, um, very, um, to be reliable, to be able to respond to calls, to be able to use the e-bikes for a full shift, as well as to make it up the hills in, if needed, around town.
Do you know what kind they are?
I would have to go back and look at the brand. So this was a recommendation from our instructor in-house, which Rick Magnuson sent an email earlier. And just what we're focusing is on the reliability and be able to move as quick or catch up to a vehicle or anything like that.
I think I mentioned in an email that I bought an e-bike five years ago that can, still using it. It was fifteen hundred dollars, and I've ridden to Maroon Bells with it. The battery usage on it, I mean, i- it just, I mean, it's, to me, it seems an extravagant, uh, expenditure for, for e-bikes. And I might be alone on that, but.
And we're happy to look at other e-bikes and, um, and see what else we can find.
I'd like to bring it to the, uh, for the record, that this is not money that's coming out of the city, city funds. This is money that was, uh, confiscated, is no longer needed in, uh, legal proceedings, and it's a windfall from drug money that was seized.
So this was actually, um, money left, uh, when they were redoing the lockers at the base of Ajax Tavern. Someone did not come and pick up their belongings, so it was, um, lost property. And we went there and collected twenty-two thousand dollars in cash, and we've held it for about three years. And so it meets now, um, the legal, um, aspect of being able to, to use those funds. And so we decided to, what better use to use that money to be able to put officers out on the street and on e-bikes and get them visible and also be able to respond to calls within the city limits.
Thank you for that. Uh, you know, Ward just brings this up because he, he saw it and thought, wow, you know, I, I've got experience with e-bikes. I've never seen a sixty-five hundred dollar that is so head and shoulders above the rest that it made him concerned. So I, you know, I, I don't think there's the desire to, uh, prevent you from using these funds on this. With the expectation that you've done due diligence and that you've checked everything out and that this is for a reason. And, um, uh, I think, I think that's what, what Ward's trying to.
Yeah, I also shared with you that I'm a, an e-bike nerd, that I do have a mountain bike that was probably in the six thousand dollar range as an e-bike. And as the city manager said, you can go out there and spend fifteen K on a, on an e-bike. So I, I have three e-bikes. Yeah, yeah, that's money that's, uh, tied up on six wheels.
And, and just wanna also, um, add that we are buying these bikes locally, and we work with a local bike shop.
Well, I trust that you've done your due diligence and that if there was a, uh, adequate and, uh, cheaper option that you would have gone with it. So, um, I thank you, and thank you for bringing it up, Ward. You know, it's nice that we do have an eye even down to the dollar on some of these things, so I appreciate that. And I'm sure that, uh, your, uh, uh, procurement officer will, uh, hear this conversation and know that there's their concerns and, you know, maybe double-check math, but I think that that's.
I think Rick's gonna love this.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you. Other que, Ward, did you have any other items that you had questions about?
Well, yeah, I have some high-level questions. Between RFPs and RFQs, uh, how long the process takes? We have some RFPs out there for advisory work for planning. How long is it gonna take to go through the process of three hundred and fifty K? Is that, uh, two and a half years for the whole, whole process, or is that, um, you know? How long is it gonna be before the planning department is get benefit from, uh, um, independent consultants?
Thanks for your question. Uh, Philip Sapino, Community Development Director. We expect the procurement process to last between three and five months, uh, to bring somebody onboard. At that time, uh, because of the technicality of the work that they'd be asked to do, we also expect there to be significant sort of training and onboarding period associated with that. But as soon as they're working with our team, we expect there to be a value add in terms of our staff capacity. So to put it as simply as possible, three to six months before somebody is onboard and doing work for our department.
And so this is more of a high-level, we've, we've talked about RFPs for different things. Is this, is this, Sarah, a normal timeframe for an RFP, three to five months, three to six months?
Uh, for professional services, which is what this, this is, rather than goods, uh, or technical services, I, I'm fine with this. I mean, sometimes we'd like it to go quicker, but at the same time, um, the interview process, because this is a multi-year commitment and someone's staff has to work with closely, whichever firm is hired, they need to do their due diligence on the front end to not have problems on the back end, to have a pretty solid contract. At this dollar amount, too, you'll see that contract. Um, it will be, be brought back before you for, for final approval before implementation.
And, and Philip, I think in your memo, I, I assume that you wrote this, uh, um, this part of the memo because it looks like you're writing.
I have a lot of help, Ward.
So two and a half years is what you're anticipating that this three hundred and fifty K is gonna cover? Or is that the term of what the con, the, uh, the level of this kind of service is expecting for a commitment?
Based upon our market research, um, for, for firms that can provide this level of service in a community like this, we, we, we expect the requested funds to last, um, for up to three years. But a lot of it depends on the volume of work that we're handing to the consultant on any given month, uh, their, their capacity to accept that work, to process it quickly, and frankly, the quality of the work. Obviously, we wouldn't allow anybody who's under contract with the city to give us sub, sub, substandard work product. But the, the faster they work, the more work we can give them, and that might actually, um, make it so that we go through the funds a little bit, a little bit faster. But again, that would still be a value add to us in terms of what we would be asking these people to do.
So in three to five months or somewhere in that timeframe, you'll be able to lighten the load on your existing staff that will give them the ability to streamline perhaps the building permit process?
That's, that's correct. We, we want our supervisors and managers to be engaged in supervisory and management activities, not managing day-to-day planning workflow, which they've been asked to do now for, for, for going on two years, depending upon the staff person.
This, I mean, this dovetails into, um, uh, landscape architect, that they're looking to hire somebody and, uh, you're looking to contract. So it opens a question about, uh, contracting versus onboarding employees. And I think that you've, you've been looking for planning staff for a couple of years.
Depending upon the position, and I think, um, Ben's portion of, uh, of some of this content describes the situation quite well. We've had challenges finding what Ben refers to, I think, really well as the sort of missing middle staff. People who are mid-career, experienced professionals with more than a decade of experience in the field, all of the credentials that one would expect from somebody who is, you know, a highly functioning, sort of senior level or principal level planner. Where we are really struggling to attract that level of talent to our department. It's a combination of, uh, local and regional labor market dynamics, significant housing challenges, and concerns that certain applicants have about their ability to relocate and, uh, have the sort of quality of life for their family that they would wanna have in our valley. I can't speak to how that, how some of those dynamics play out for other job types in other departments. But as far as, as we've experienced over the last two years, that, 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 that skill level, that level of education and experience is increasingly hard to attract. And so that's why we feel like, um, outsourcing some of those services so that we can build up the team that we do have to engage in more senior-level work is the best approach that we can take right now to be responsive to our customers' needs.
And you, you have to indulge me here because during, during budgets and supplemental budgets, this is the time we really can get down to, to line items. And so it gives us, and me, an opportunity to really look at some of this, and it, for me, I'm looking at what the, what is the full-time employee number for the city now? What was it four years ago? And are we adding, when we're adding a new FTE, say for example, a, uh, from the one hundred and five for parks, what was the park's, um, full-time equivalent, uh, workforce, uh, in the past? Are we, are we gaining? Are we losing? Are we increasing, um, uh, full FTE, number of FTEs in the city employment?
The, uh, for, it's full-time positions, yes. It has increased, uh, in the last six years. I can't recall on a four-year basis, but I know on a six-year basis it has. Uh, there's a couple of factors that have put into that. First of all, there's been some specific requests of council that have resulted in additional staffing positions. Another thing has been some of our base services, and I'll use the police department as an example. I continue to see our police department staffed at lower levels than what are norms that we should be addressing as a community as a priority, that it's nothing we can outsource. Um, and then the third thing is, is, for example, in the parks department, you've authorized us taking several seasonal positions and converting them into full-time positions, so that also affects the number. Our current, um, authorized FTE count is three thirty-two? Do either of you have it off the top of your head?
I'm looking up twenty nineteen, so you're ahead of me.
Right, and I believe we were at about three hundred six years ago.
Three hundred and twenty-six in twenty nineteen.
Oh, okay, much higher than I thought. Twenty-six more than I thought.
And I'll get you the other one here in just a minute. It's in the three thirties.
Well, Professor Pete is looking at this. Are, uh, these can, these consulting, um, contracts, these are people that can do this remotely, that don't require housing?
That's correct, a- a- and that is one of the reasons why this is an attractive solution for us. We do expect that from time to time, um, some of these individuals working for this firm may have to travel to the valley for one reason or another to provide us with the level of support that we're looking for. But we do, we do not expect to have to provide any sort of meaningful, um, sort of housing solution for these people in order to be able to provide these services. That's, that's, that, that is not something that is included in, in the, um, in the scope of work.
In, in, in response to Sarah's, uh, comment about council making some requests, and I think that, uh, previous councils have made it abundantly clear that we support, um, funding comm dev for additional FTEs if, if that's what is needed for streamlining and, um, increasing the efficiency of your department.
And, and we have heard that support, and we appreciate it. And, um, at this point, our sort of analysis of our staffing and our workload and our needs all point to this as being the most efficient and the most responsive solution.
Thank you. Professor Pete?
It was about a ten percent increase in the, some nineteen to twenty-three.
Am I the only one that had questions on this spring supplemental?
No. I've, I have one more point on one item, when, whenever it's my turn.
Yeah, I had, I had questions. It, I mean, gas prices have gone so much. We're looking at a hundred and seventy K for first quarter, an increase in, in gas for, um, a number of boilers. And, uh, I know that there's a, um, in the memo, it says that there's ninety-eight percent efficiency for boilers that to be replaced at the Wheeler Opera House. I know also that a number of, uh, top-tier, uh, goal of the city is to decrease greenhouse gases. And, um, I don't know if there is an end in sight to the increases in gas prices.
They've already come down.
I'm sorry?
They've already come down.
They're working down, yeah, okay. Yeah, so I, I was questioning if, uh, if we should be looking again at, uh, the delta between all electric boilers and natural gas boilers.
Yeah, for the Wheeler, we did explore that option. The biggest challenge for us right now has been supply chain issues with getting that, plus the infrastructure upgrades we would need outside the building to actually bring the power there. And then there's the time constraints with all that relative to the season starting in the fall, when we'd have to really fire everything up. So unfortunately, I think we have a bit of a timing issue. Otherwise, we certainly were open to kind of looking at that electric replacement option.
And if you recall, this is the replacement of the other three. We replaced two back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eighteen after we had a, um, electrical issue, uh, in the building that, well, on the grid, on the grid, that affected two of the, the five boilers then. But we have asked for us to, in, in the, the, um, asset team knows quite well to continue to look at all-electric options. The efficiency of these new boilers, though, will, will certainly be better than what, what we're taking out.
I think that covered the points that I had, questions on the spring supplemental.
Okay, we can always come back to you. Bill?
Yeah, further to, to something that Ward touched on. I believe it's called maintenance tech. I talked about this at first reading, but this, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, would increase the FTE count?
Right, currently it's a termed position, which means it was authorized for 12 months. And we're requesting it being an ongoing authorization. So there's some needs. The recreation facilities, quite frankly, are all aging. The rec center is now at 17 years. And Lou, as you can see from some of our other requests in here for Lewis Ice Garden that you approved earlier tonight, I'm sorry, for Lewis Ice Arena and the Ice Garden, there continues to be some pretty major capital-related needs that is taking some staff time away from some of the routine maintenance.
I appreciate that, I understand that. I'm speaking specifically to hiring a full-time permanent custodian, janitor, housekeeper, whatever the appropriate term might be. I, I just, I, I'm not sure I would do this if I owned these facilities. I would subcontract this work for a variety of reasons. Staff provided an analysis of the hourly wage difference between hiring it out versus what the, you know, full employee load cost would be doing it individually. It doesn't take into account paid time off and sick days and perhaps lower productivity than a subcontracted worker might have. So I would encourage us for something like this, which is pretty easy to subcontract, that that might be a better approach than bringing on another full-time employee. That's the end of my point, thanks.
Do you, Bill, are you, did you, were you able to look at what cost savings over, on an annual basis, there are there?
Yeah, effectively none. But again, the analysis does not take into account things like paid time off and sick days and family and medical leave and things like that, which would increase the hourly cost of the employed position versus the subcontracted position. So I think realistically, it's less money on an annual basis to subcontract this, in my opinion, than, than to hire internally.
Hi Scott.
Hi Tori. Good evening, Council. Scott Chisum, Director of Business Services. So this position that we're discussing is part of my department. I just want to make a point of clarification that it, the analysis does include kind of a comparison of the fully loaded staff cost. So.
I'm going to just stop you there real quick, Scott, because what Bill's referring to, though, is when that person takes leave and the work still needs to be done. And so that is not in your request that I approve for the supplemental, that work is being picked up by others within the organization during that, that paid time off period. So that, there is a slight difference in what Bill is articulating here, that he's correct that the additional labor, the real, reallocation of labor to cover the time off is not included in that calculation.
We also have a combination. Tried to address this in some of our response where we really do have a, you know, we have some contracted services to support our in-house staff services. So that combined model is where we think we kind of have met the sweet spot of meeting the, you know, the very real needs of our recreation facilities. And, you know, like we tried to highlight in the response, it's frankly not as easy as making that one call to obtain that contracted service. And that's part of the reason why we have, why we're making this request and why we have a mixed model. So we can ultimately meet the community need at our facilities.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate that.
Thanks.
So what I'm hearing is in the future, though, that's someone, it's a theme tonight. You'd like us to do a little more articulation of why we've chosen to recommend in-house hiring versus going outside for professional services. So in future staff reports, we'll include that when we do our section on alternatives. So there's a little more clear upfront for you what the thinking is.
Thanks, Sarah. Any other items?
Not for me, thank you.
Any other items on this end of the table?
Yeah, I did have one more, and it's.
Rachel? It's, it's about the broadband resiliency. And I, you know, we have two fiber coming into town. One is the Thor and one is Comcast. And I know for years I've been saying, well, why don't, when Comcast goes down, why can't we automatically switch over to the community broadband, the Thor project, to particularly supply 911 calls that are taken down when the cable's been cut in the past? So the, and we're not talking about a lot of money. And the resiliency or the redundancy for backups is certainly needed. But I just wondered if there's more bandwidth that's not being used out of the Thor. As I recall, and I had notes here somewhere, but they've disappeared into the ether. It was, I think, Picken County, the city offices, the hospital and the school district, I think, are all using that Thor broadband. And how much is more, how much more is left?
Hey, John. John Soborowski, IT Director. And I guess I'm the broadband guy too. How much is left? Quite a bit. And one of the requests I have here is for an increase on our redundant backup, because right now that's very, very low in terms of our bandwidth capabilities. So we want to bring that up to what we're using for the rest of our data system. So there's, there's bandwidth available. And one of the things we need to talk about is what are we going to use it for? Where's Aspen Community Broadband going to go? And I know that's a topic that, that you're very fond of, so.
Yeah, I'm a nerd. Yeah, and I think one of the requests is to bring up the guest internet in the city offices to a gigabit instead of 100 megabits.
Correct, that's the backup side. We are already at a gigabit on, on the primary.
Okay, it's, I, I just, I'll, I'll leave it to you, but I just want to know if, if we can't use more of the bandwidth from that Thor cable and also that fallover that I think that you were going to discuss with Comcast years ago and never was able to get it.
One of the issues that, we have been discussing it actually very recently. And one of the issues is BGP or Border Gateway Protocols, one of those technical terms about how we route. I know, Ward, you're familiar with that. We don't own our own IP addresses. That was a mistake, I believe, made many, many years ago when we initially built the network. And there are no IPv4 addresses left.
Wow, V6.
We can do that. That, that would be a big project, but it can be done. So for the rest of you, it's just, just a way of, of how we connect to the internet is really what it means. And that capability of failover, we're actually working on that with another router, so.
I just wanted to hear your voice.
Thank you.
Match made in heaven. Well, wouldn't want to waste a trip.
Ward, stop in any time, the rest of you also. Very happy to talk.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ward? That was your last one? Okay.
I'm happy to make a motion on this if we're at that point.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments real quickly. I did, I had questions around the transportation fund and the short-range transportation plan. I had my questions answered, though. I, I, you know, there's so much information and data out there around this issue that I was surprised that we would be wanting to do this. But the answer that I've gotten back is that this is information that will help us in the future. And it is something that both comm dev director as well as transportation supports. So I'm willing to accept that. It seems strange to me, but I'm willing to accept the reasoning. I wanted to make a note in here about the good things that I see in here. I love the Cozy Point work that we're embarking on through this supplemental approval. I wanted to pull out, yeah, Cozy Point as well as the U.S. Cemetery Management Plan and other items that are in here that I think are fantastic coming forward to us in our supplemental. I don't have any other questions that haven't been answered in other meetings. So Bill, with that, yes, we could take a motion.
Thanks, I'm sorry, I totally spaced on the fact that you hadn't.
All good.
Had your opportunity.
Not a problem.
I apologize. So I would make a, a motion to approve Ordinance 7 with the following amendments. Removal of the $200,000 capital allocation for the Armory, and to be revisited at a later time, and removal of the maintenance tech shift from temporary to permanent in recreation. Any other technical language required there?
I think that covers it. Is there a second?
My first motion's issued.
There's no second, so the motion will fail due to lack of a second. Is there anybody else that would like to put forward a motion?
I move we adopt Ordinance 7, 2023 series for the fall supplemental. Spring, get ahead of myself. Spring supplemental budget.
Ward, do you want to include any language that Sarah alluded to earlier regarding the $200,000 that she offered the ability to have a check-in before any of it goes out the door?
I thought we were going to have that. If that needs to be included in this, I'm not sure.
It's discretionary. If you want to put it in the motion, that's fine. What I can tell clearly here is, is I'm not spending those funds without conversation. And most likely, that dollar amount, it's not going to fall under our as-needed contractors.
Yeah, and additionally, we do have that final lease subject to council approval. So I'll, I'll just leave it at a blanket. Approval of Ordinance, passing Ordinance 7.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion. Could we have a? I think I did. I think I did. It was a while ago, Jim, you're right. All right, motion a second, no further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote for Ordinance number seven, spring supplemental budget request?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. Jim, would you like to inform us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff is requesting the council go into an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 2464024A, purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, sale of any real, personal, or other property interest. For B, conference with an attorney for receipt of specific legal advice. For E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation. Developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators. Specific items of discussion are ongoing litigation, the Centennial Owners Association versus City of Aspen, Forest Lookout II LLC and Aspen Forest Eighth Street LLC versus City of Aspen, as well as in consolidated case of DR 24F16 LLC versus the City of Aspen. Property acquisition, as stated, the lease transfer and acquisition of property interests. However, due to commerce, due to market forces, negotiation strategies, and confidentiality demands of parties involved in this set state by the subject of the specific legal advice, which further disclosure would be a detriment to the city's strategic position, the exact properties cannot be disclosed. And finally, legal advice regarding the 1994 settlement agreement in Centennial Aspen Two Limited Partnership. If council votes to go into executive session, the executive session will be recorded. According, will be maintained by the clerk for a period of not less than 90 days. As we have been doing in the past, we will convene the executive session in the council meeting room on the second level of City Hall. We will not return to this, to these chambers for the adjournment. We will adjourn downstairs.
Is there a motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion a second, is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for executive session, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth? Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Once again, thank you to Grassroots, we appreciate you. Have a wonderful evening.